Hello, okay. Good evening and welcome everyone to the regular public meeting of the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. The Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of personnel and potential litigation related to code enforcement. Wanted to give, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that the township's Veterans Committee is going to host our ceremony honoring our county's, our country's veterans on Saturday, November 8th, 2025, from 10:30 a.m. to noon at Veterans Park. We're all crossing our fingers for good weather. That will be followed by complimentary refreshments provided by Taste of Lower Gwinnett. Now open it up to public comments on items, concerns, questions, not on the agenda. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the first item of our agenda, which is the consideration of authorization to initiate a process to advertise, the advertisement of a legal notice to amend Chapter 1295, the wireless telecommunications towers intended as an overlay district, included in the board packet as a memo, and the board also has a draft of the ordinance. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, are there any questions from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you guys so much. So just for Mr. Vander Swann's benefit, so the board has just authorized staff to initiate the amendment process for the zoning ordinance amendment that would allow the cell towers. That's it, Mr. Vander Swann. I was looking at you, Mr. Vander Swann. I expected you to come up. You didn't want to do anything?
Happy job. As more of us say, I continue to come every time this happens on the agenda. I appreciate your tolerance, your appreciation, your dedication. It certainly is needed and you reflect that need. So as a citizen, as a voting citizen, I applaud your efforts.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vander Swann. Next time you can join us online, though. You don't have to come all the way out if you don't want to. Thank you so much. It is always good to see you, sir.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Hey, cell tower. Almost there.
Next up, we have a presentation on land development for J&amp;J Project S. Open it up to the representatives from J&amp;J.
Big Manager, my name is John Walco. I'm with Kill Kenny Law, the attorney for Johnson &amp; Johnson. I'm joined here tonight with Kevin Selger from Gilmore and Kyle Turner, who's the new senior management manager of operations and facilities at Spring House Campus. So hopefully you'll get a chance to meet him and he'll tell you a little bit about the project. We're here today to discuss the CESE lab building that is being proposed. CESE is a cell engineering analytical sciences lab onto the Spring House campus. It seems like we're here every two years or so with an addition to the campus and it goes to show that Johnson &amp; Johnson wants to grow here and they're doing great, exciting things, exciting things that requires larger equipment and more lab space based upon the future and growth of how pharmaceuticals are going. And I would first like to just present Mr. Turner, Kyle Turner, just to give a little bit of an overview about what is being proposed in the building and the addition and the surrounding improvements. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Selger from Gilmore to kind of go run through more of the technical aspects of the project. We're happy to answer any questions at that time. We do have a letter, I'm not sure if it's in your packet, a review letter from CKS. It's a clean letter. Everything is, will comply from the date of that letter. We have submitted revised waiver request letters to comply with that comment and we're happy to go through the waivers or individual waivers if there's any questions. And we've also submitted the geotechnical report. So at this point, from a staff point of view, everything's will comply on any issues. We did appear before the planning commission, again, went through the waivers, went through the plans and received unanimous support contingent upon complying with these recommendations. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Turner to just give a brief description of what's being proposed.
Thanks, Ken. Yeah, so if you don't know, our Spring House facility is a million square foot facility where we have three therapeutic areas that we do research and development, immunology, oncology, and communicable diseases. Our cell engineering and analytical sciences group is in a space that we need to decompress. They've, their equipment has grown with the work that they do. They are responsible for manufacturing the cell lines that are used globally for J&amp;J and their biologics manufacturing industry and also for our biologics licensing agreements for marketing. With this decompression, our goals are to give them a space that is, increases their ability to automate as oncology becomes a bigger therapeutic area that we are diving into from a research and development perspective. The equipment is getting much larger that we do our research with. This space will allow for growth in future technologies for our cell engineering and analytical sciences group to grow their technology. That's pretty much it. And I will say, I'm new to the site. I've been there for two months, but my predecessor, Jim Lilly, had nothing but great things to say about the relationship that we have with the township. And in some of the research that I've done in the two months that I'm there, it seems that our partnership with this township and the projects that we have has allowed us over the past 11 years to put 15 new products through discovery and development and onto market to help patients. So I do want to thank the township for your partnership in these projects. Thank you.
Now we have Kevin Selger from Gilmore, and I'm sure he'll go through things, but I think the important thing to highlight for purposes of land development, again, is that this is more for lab space, that we're not adding additional employees, not adding additional seats. There is sufficient parking and looking at the map, you can see the beautiful new parking lots that you've approved, I think a couple of years ago, that are sufficient for the purposes. It relates to one of the waivers related to the traffic impact study waiver. Although it's my understanding, the board does have some concerns about future occupation of those properties. So we are intending to pay any traffic impact fees that are relevant to the project, although we're not adding those additional traffic counts. Traditionally, we've been able to verify the, that through the key swipes because everyone has to swipe in when they come in. And again, that will stay consistent and can be verified again by the township. This question of stormwater also comes up often. Again, with stormwater, you can see right in the middle of the plan, that large basin that's used for stormwater, that is, has been and will continue to be sufficient for purposes of stormwater gathering and retention. But with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin for a little bit more technical details and answer any questions you have regarding to the plan.
Okay, thanks, Sean. So to orient everybody to the plan, McKean Road's on the upper part of the plan, Route 309 to the left. And our building is located mostly facing 309, but close to the McKean roadside. It is connected to existing building 15. You can see it's an extension off of the existing building complex and is within a current, you know, somewhat undeveloped area. There is some service yard paving, things like that in that area that this new building will occupy. Jamie, can you get the next one? You can see this is the existing area here, building 15 and building 19. You can see the existing parking, actually the lighter parking was, believe it or not, the more recent parking that was, was built versus the darker parking. We're not really touching that per se. And then this building's going to be located in the green area sort of between the parking and the existing building complex. Can you get the next one? And this is a render plan that shows the proposed CESE lab building. It is a 42,000 square foot building. It's two floors of labs, which total 33,000 square feet and 9,000 square feet of mechanical support space that's on the third floor. It is going to be landscaped. You can see all the trees. We have met with and had extensive meetings with the fire marshal to work out fire department access. So you can see the, the large paved area on the lower side of the building. That has all been designed and sized for the fire department access, even working out with the fire marshal about where he wants the truck to pull up. We do have exterior equipment. There are some heat pumps, you know, mechanical equipment that are outside. Again, this, this is all actually in a lower area of the site. The parking is approximately 10 feet above the first floor of this new building. So the building is actually sitting sort of down in the site. And then you can also see along Route 309, there is extensive existing tree cover that's between our existing loop road and parking and Route 309. So.
And very far from McKean Road.
Yeah, and very, over 600 feet from McKean Road. Storm management, as John says, being managed by, you know, master planned facilities that are within the site itself. We are in the final vestiges of MPDS permit approval. We do maintain a campus-wide MPDS permit and we amend it as projects come along, but that MPDS permit is essentially functioning as a master stormer plant. So we're in compliance with that. With that, I think we're open to questions.
Just wanted to confirm, the letter that you're talking about where all of the waivers are satisfied is the one dated October 23rd, correct?
I wouldn't say that they're satisfied, but we did submit the, yes, the October 23rd, 2025 CKS letter, which requested an updated waiver letter to address those waivers and noting the changes to, for example, for the first waiver from the 12 inch to the six inch, which again was discussed and approved by the planning commission with that change. That was submitted today. So there is a revised waiver letter to submit with that request as there is a geotech report that was submitted, which was also a comment that that were, they were waiting for. So, and obviously as, as Selger said, we're going to comply and have spoken with the fire marshal, so we don't believe it's an issue to comply with the internal site circulation issues and everything else is just technical and will comply. The other thing to add, I think that is important is this will also provide ADA accessibility to the building on, on that side of the building that's not there currently. So again, it would be more accessible. And if you've driven by the internal loop road on that site, you would see that this, this area really is sort of the, you know, the back of the alley that, that kind of keeps the more the mechanical and the trailers work and this is really going to clean up that side. And again, with the, the, the lack of traffic that's coming from this, the lack of, of seats or jobs, just additional lab space, we don't anticipate there being any increase in people coming and going from that site. We were here a couple of years ago for the improvements to McKean Road and maybe you've seen it's going in, the, the crosswalk.
That's partially been installed.
It's partially been installed, so we're continuing to live up to the obligations that we've agreed to in years past and we continue to, to hope to do that.
Just one quick question about the traffic issue. So you're requesting a waiver from the traffic study, but do I understand that there's going to be some communication with our traffic engineer about, to sort of shore up that there is no additional?
Yes, the, we're, we're happy to verify anything related to the study. To calculate the fee, the fee would be based upon the use and the, the area, the square footage of that area. So based upon that, my understanding is that you'd be able to calculate the proposed fee, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Dixon.
Yeah, there, there's, I guess, two different requirements pertaining to traffic. One is to do a traffic impact study for the development, which they've asked for a waiver for. We're, we're fine with that waiver. As they mentioned, they're not initially projecting to generate any traffic, even if they were based on the square footage that they're adding. We don't view it as being significant. We went back and looked at the traffic study they did a couple of years ago for the parking expansion and looked at the results from that and don't feel even if they were adding traffic based on this square footage, it would really move the needle. So we're okay with the waiver. The traffic impact fee though is a different requirement and, you know, the township's requesting that they pay a fee based on the square footage in case that square footage was ever used in the future and would add traffic to the site.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you both.
We understand you only get one shot at that traffic impact fee and if it was changed in the future, that's done. So that's a, we recognize that as a fair request, although we don't intend to use it that way. We can't speak for 10 years from now, of course. So that, that is something that if desired to move forward with a resolution to approve that plan, we'd expect that your final solicitor would put into that as a requirement of paying as well as obtaining all of the outside requirements for the MPDS permits and complying with all outside agency requirements, complying with all the letters, fire marshal. And we're happy to address any other issues at this point in time if there's any questions or concerns.
So I understand you don't expect to increase headcount at the site with these improvements, but it seems to me that there's, there's incremental growth, right, of the site over the years. So I'm not sure how you can say you don't expect to head, to increase the driving on McKean.
Right, so we've just begun our master plan discussions and this cell engineering and analytical sciences team is currently working in building 15, which we have not had the ability to do any renovations over the last 10 years due to the criticality of the work that they do. So when we relocate this team to the new building, that space will become available to be shut down and give us the opportunity to now look at our infrastructure and update. And then our goal is to develop swing space labs at some point where when science changes, we're able to move groups that work in specific labs within our current footprint into the swing space lab so that we can then update their current lab space to newer technology and then move them back into the space where we have a challenge now where we can't shut down to update our, our infrastructure. So we have aging infrastructure, air handlers, other things that we'll be able to now to replace.
All right.
But I don't, we, we've discussed headcount and there is no future headcount increases for the site for the next five years.
And they usually use the word seats. There's no new seats and I think Mr. Turner used the word.
Terminology.
And he used the word decompression and that's what it is. Right now, the scientists are there working, you know, back to back, trying to get stuff done. And on top of that, the equipment is much larger and technical in order to get it done. So they're not, you know, they need additional space to work.
This is not going to be a pilot plant, right?
A pilot plant, it's not a new, there's, it's not anything new that they're bringing in people to do. It's what they're doing now and they just need more space to do it. And, and as a result, creating more flexibility within the building for, for the additional space.
My last question is, I noticed in the minutes from the planning commission meeting, which it seemed like you guys addressed everything, all the questions that were asked, which is great. I, I'd just like to have confirmation that you are going to comply with the request from the county commission, planning commission review.
That was going to be my actual question too, to Tazzy. Just their, their compliance as it relates to landscaping, is that what you're talking about, the tree, the tree number?
Yeah, the trees and additional landscaping that was brought up by the county.
Not sure.
And I know that was back in August, so I'm not sure if you guys have that in the letter, but I didn't, I didn't see it. So if you could just confirm the number of trees.
Yeah, so we, we've increased the, the number of trees to meet the current township ordinance and we've backchecked against the native plant requirement. And then we've also added the current plans, you know, this letter talks about there are some terrorist walls that come down. Those terrorist walls are going to be landscaped with shrubs and perennials, mostly because they cannot get in there to maintain lawn. So those things are going to be planted up and then we have watermelon trees and we have a, a new planting plan that was submitted with the re-smission, so.
I'm glad to hear that. It seemed like what I saw was that you were not going to comply with that.
No, I don't recall addressing the county. I think it was more we had to look at it, but obviously we will look at that and we'll comply. And one of the other, I think, good additions to the community is the extension of the trail. It's obviously for, the trail isn't being, we don't want the public to go into the property, but it allows the employees to utilize that trail a little bit more and gives access to the trail around the property. And again, that is actually one of the waivers is to allow that trail width to comply with the existing trail on the property.
Can you just confirm, are you done, Tazzy? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can you just confirm the number of trees? There's like a little bit of disparity within what you're totally going to do. And I know that you said you're going to comply.
Jamie, I, I don't have the, the final plan right in front of me, but we're, we're in compliance with whatever the ordinance requires.
And the landscaping plan was revised and reflected the comments that I had as far as the inconsistency in the number of required trees.
So you had proposed 79 trees? Or is it that you proposed 42 trees and the, and the county, I think, is saying that you should have 79?
Yeah, I think, I think the issue was, is that there were, there's one tree per thousand square feet of building required. That equates to 42. And then we had 32 trees as replacements. And I think there was an inconsistency whether we had 74 trees or 79 trees. I think we have 74, 75 right now.
And it needs to be 79?
See, it needs to be 74.
Okay. What's the confirmed, what's the confirmed amount that you're going to plan?
I believe it's 75. Yeah, we're, and we're required to have 74.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. I think that's all that I had.
Any other questions?
Just quickly, the, the stormwater management, you had said in the picture that there was the, the basin and there's going to be no, there's no need for additional work with that. The county just had recommended that you have some type of, I guess, plan for inspection, required regular inspection, a maintenance plan. And that's been developed just to make sure that there's no debris or anything. You did have that maintenance plan created and ready to go once this is in place.
So we have an ongoing operations and maintenance plan that every time we go in and amend, we, we have a campus-wide, as I said, campus-wide MPDS stormwater permit that we've had since 2011. That's part of why this is called Project S. So on that plan, we had started with Project A. We're now up to Project S. And every time we go in and amend that plan to add a project, we end up updating, if need be, the operations and maintenance, you know, agreement manual.
And we're also happy to enter into new operation and maintenance agreements with, with the township that your township solicitor generally drafts. I mean, that's where the water ends up, but there are the facilities and the pipes that take it there. So we have the ability to retain the water, but there are going to be new facilities that are installed, installed that we will, will agree to maintain, just like any other land development through a operation and maintenance agreement.
Okay. Just want to go back to the trees for one quick second. The county actually has a recommendation of 79 trees and I know that you guys said 75. Are you okay with meeting whatever the county's recommendation would be based upon what they're articulating?
Yeah, it's, certainly we have the room.
And it could be a typo, it could be an error in some way. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, if, we'd have to see why the county came up with that number or, or even the recommendation. But certainly the site would accommodate additional trees if needed.
Are you having to take down any trees? Are you taking down any trees?
We are taking down some trees and we are replacing them. That's the 32 three-inch caliper trees, whatever that caliper inch equated to. But these are trees internal, it's not woodland areas. These are sort of individual trees that have been planted over time. So these are within the, you know, essentially the building footprint.
So, so you're meeting the requirement, the lower Gwinnett requirement for replacing trees?
Yeah, we're meeting both. We're meeting the lower Gwinnett requirement for number of trees based on the building square footage and we're meeting the lower Gwinnett requirement for replacement of trees being removed. So we're meeting both.
Okay. No waiver?
No waiver.
For the trees?
No.
It just seems like there might be a discrepancy in the number, that's all.
Yeah, it seems from reading that letter that the county believed that 79 were required.
Yeah.
And if that is the case, we will meet the requirements.
I just wanted to make sure. I know you had, yes, okay.
It's a small aspect to such a big building. The cost of the building, I'm saying, is a big compared to the cost of the trees. So the difference between 75 and 79 should be pretty trivial.
That's fine. Yeah, we obviously will comply. We're not going to request any waivers for any trees, tree plantings, replacements.
Speak in our language.
Any additional questions from the board? Any additional questions from the public?
Oh, I do have one last question. I'm sorry. This occurred to me. So in your building plans, have you given any consideration to renewable energy that's going to be used on the site to power the building?
I don't know that they're telling you about renewable energy. They are right now shooting for a lead gold building. Lead gold or lead silver? It is silver, silver. So they're definitely heading down that route, but the renewable energy, that one is not part of this project.
Okay. Does J&amp;J ever consider that when they're building a site out?
Yeah, yeah, they consider it. I think for us, when we look at the, the infrastructure that we're installing, rather than going with gas heated boilers, we're looking at our decarbonization at the site. So we will be installing heat pumps for this building instead that will use less energy and look at our carbon footprint in relations to this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. And good to hear that you're going to try for lead silver. That's great.
Yes, thank you.
Any additional questions from the public? Or comments? Seeing none, thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much for having us. And again, as Mr. Turner said, if anyone has any questions about the facility, in the past, I'm sure he'd like to have anybody over that wants to see what they're doing over there, staff, board members, they'd usually love to have, host you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To board in front of us, we have a memorandum that outlines it. We had the presentation. We have consideration now whether we want to authorize our solicitor to prepare a conditional preliminary final land development approval resolution pursuant to the discussion points that were raised today. I'd like to make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up. It's consideration. I think we have a memo in our board packet around the consideration of awarding our signal pole bid award. One second. So we have a recommendation from our traffic engineer. Are you making the presentation, Chad? Sure, why not? Come on up, Chad.
Who wants to hear me say the name of it?
I know, because I can't say the names, Chad.
So yeah, the, the board authorized us to put out the bid, the replacement of two traffic signal mast arms at the intersection of Bethlehem and Pennlin Pike. We got the bid results back and have reviewed them and based on the bids we received, we were recommending that the township reward the project to Kaharchik Construction in the amount of $83,305. Anticipated construction would be spring, summer timeframe of next year, just because of the lead time involved with getting the steel mast arms.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dixon. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to Kaharchik Construction in the amount of $83,305 for the Bethlehem Pike, Pennlin Pike Traffic Signal Mast Arm Replacements. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Appreciate your time. Next up is a presentation discussion of our board. Am I turning it over to Melinda, our finance director?
Thank you.
There? Am I good? Can you hear me? Yep. Okay. So, um, in your packet that was put in front of your seat there, you have the 2026 draft master budget with a 2025 revised budget and the projection for comparison. You also have a copy of the five-year capital plan. Those items were also in the packet that are on the website. But I also printed out a copy of what I'm going to be presenting up here for the graphs, just in case you wanted to take notes or write down questions or whatnot, so that you have that. Basically, as I did last year, I'm going to be presenting the budget in three different fund groups. So I'm going to group them with the general operating funds, the sewer funds, and the capital funds. So the general operating funds are the funds that collect all of the monies that come into the township, the, the tax monies, and that pays for the personnel to run, protect, and maintain the township. Then we have the sewer funds. The sewer funds are the sewer operating fund and the capital. The sewer operating fund handles the treatment of township sewage by Ambler, repairs and maintenance of township, and also township sewer system, which carries the sewage to the treatment plant, and it builds the customers. It's a business-like activity. And we also have a sewer capital fund that repairs, maintains, builds new infrastructure for the sewer lines, the pump stations, et cetera, owned by the township. And then the third group are the capital funds. And the capital funds receive interest on reserves, grants, and surplus from the operating funds, and it handles all of the projects, road paving, vehicle and equipment purchases, et cetera. So the first graph there that we have, this is the general fund operating revenues. As you can see, the largest part there in green, that piece of the pie, is the earned income tax. And that makes up 50% of all of the revenues that come into the township are from earned income tax. We also have the blue portion there, which is related, is the mercantile, the local services tax and the business privilege tax. That makes up 11%. Real estate taxes there at the bottom in the, the purple, that's 14% of the total revenue comes from real estate taxes. We also have transfer tax, which is 5%. State aid that comes in for the fire and for the pension is 5%. Our permits and licenses are approximately 4%. We also have interest that's on our reserves that makes up 3% of our total revenues. The rental income that I have listed there, that's the Wells Fargo lease, and that's some of the allocation of expenses that the sewer fund pays the general fund for handling the, the things that we need to do for the, for the sewer. And let's see, what else did I not go? Oh, and then we have subdivision zoning and conditional use fees, which are 2%. That gives us total budgeted revenues for 2026 in the general fund operating of $11,932,635. Now, I'm going to go into the explanation of the revenue types. I didn't do that last year, but I kind of just wanted to go over some of them with you. So if we go to the next slide. This is a running total of the earned income tax. This shows the years from 2022 through 2025. 2025 is the orange line. That only goes through September because that's all I had when I printed off the graphs. But you can see that it's very consistent. Unless you have a K1 from a partnership or an S corp or you're a C corp, earned income tax is withheld by the employer, and that's why it's so consistent and it comes in consistently. And basically, it's 1% on the earnings levied on individuals who live in the municipality. That's shared 50/50 with the school district, or non-residents who work in the township who don't have an earned income tax where they live. That's not shared with the school district, and those are the monies that come in. For the 2026 budget, we are using $6 million, and the 2025 projection is 5.8 million. We pay commissions to Burkheimer for collecting this tax. Burkheimer collects this. We consider it an Act 511 tax. We pay them currently 1.1%, but that's going to be lowered to 0.93% in February. We just got an email on that. So that commission will be lowered.
Why is that? Why are they lowering it?
They came up with a new agreement when their contract runs up.
Well, that's fabulous.
Yeah, I know.
Unexpected.
Unexpected, yes. You will notice that 2022 is a little higher. You can see where most of the graphs, it's increasing a little bit for each year, but 2022 is much higher. That's because we were coming off of the post-pandemic return and everybody was going back to in-person operations. And that's what, that makes it. But 2025 is running slightly higher than 23 and 24. Go to the next slide. This is the business privilege tax. So business privilege tax is a gross receipts tax on services and professions. It's 1.5 mils. So if your gross receipts are $10,000, you're going to pay $15 in gross receipts tax. We pay Burkheimer commissions on this tax of 2.25%. And if you notice, the orange line for 2025 is much higher than the other lines. If you remember, a couple of months ago, I told you, we had collected 234,000 of prior year delinquent taxes. We don't expect that to happen again. I know they did send out letters for that, and they were thinking that might have been it. It could have also been that now that people are out of the pandemic, it took them a little bit to catch up, and they're paying past taxes on that. The budget that we have for 2026 is $650,000, and the projection for '25 is $750,000. The projection is higher because we collected those prior taxes. If we go to the next slide, we're going to talk about the, the mercantile tax. So the mercantile tax is also a gross receipts tax, but this is on wholesale and retail goods. The retail goods are taxed the same as the business privilege at 1.5 mils, but the wholesale goods are taxed at 0.2 mils. So basically, again, on $10,000, you're looking at $15 on retail or $2 for, for wholesale. We pay Burkheimer a commission of 2.25% on this also. You will notice that 2022, the pink line skyrocketed real high. The majority of that was due to an electrical contractor. They paid their 2019, 2021, and '22 taxes in '22. That totaled over $122,000. And then there were, there was an additional 10 accounts that paid back taxes totaling $61,000 for an increase of about $183K. So that was kind of an anomaly, and we don't plan on that happening.
That electrical contractor's still here?
No, they went out of business. So that's why they ended up paying all the back taxes. Yeah, probably from COVID.
Who do we get this mercantile tax from?
Burkheimer collects all of the taxes I just went through. And it's on gross receipts on wholesale and retail goods.
So like at a grocery store or?
It, it for business privilege on the gross receipts.
Okay.
We're only budgeting $240,000 for 2026, and the 2025 projection was 248. So it is increasing because you have to take out what was in there, but it's just small.
Melinda, is Burkheimer's rate remaining the same for the mercantile tax and the business privilege tax? It's only the earned income tax?
It's Joe, only the earned income tax that's going down, yes.
And we don't negotiate that? Is the county negotiates that?
I think the county negotiates. No?
The state law requires there to be county-wide collection of the earned income tax. So there is a committee that we are a part of, the Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee, which is all the municipalities and all the school districts in Montgomery County that have an earned income tax. And we, all the members vote for a board who does most of, of the work. And they are the ones who have, the management committee just went out and, and reviewed, you know, Burkheimer versus some of, Keystone is really the main competition. And then decided to renew their contract for an eight-year contract. They've been doing five-year renewals. I think that's partly why they were able to negotiate that smaller percentage. Not a whole lot of municipalities have the business privilege and the mercantile tax. In the 1980s, the legislature grant, stopped allowing municipalities to impose the gross receipts tax. So if you did not have one, as of, I think it's '86, you could not impose that tax, and you, and anyone who did have it could not raise the rates. So you're, you're capped where it is. Because of that, not a whole lot of municipalities have that. Most municipalities have the local services tax, but that's a much smaller tax than the local services tax. For convenience for the businesses, I, I think most of the municipalities in Montgomery County that have those business taxes use Burkheimer so that the businesses only have to, they have to submit to Burkheimer for their earned income tax withholdings. And that way, they're using the same company for the business tax withholdings. But that's a much smaller percentage of what they're collecting. So the percentage is higher. The administrative percentage is higher. So we, the township has the option to go to somebody else for the local services tax and the gross receipts tax collection?
Oh, we do.
If you wanted to. You, you have to use the Burkheimer, the county-wide selected tax collector for the earned income tax. It's not county government, but our group of municipalities and school districts. You don't have to for the others, but it does make sense, you know, administratively, just to not add confusion to the businesses in Lower Gwinnett.
Okay.
If we go to the next slide, the, the local services tax, the local services tax is the $52 a year that you pay. And it's paid by anyone who works in the township. If you make less than $12,000, you're exempt from the tax, but employers are required to withhold it. It's used to fund, it's not actually a per capita tax. A lot of people did. I, I looked this up. It's used to fund essential community services at the municipal levels, which would be the police, fire protection, and the road maintenance. It's very consistent, as you can see the way we collect it. We budgeted for 2026 $425,000, and the 2025 projection is $444.000. We pay commissions to Burkheimer of 1.75% on the local services tax. So if you get, go to the next slide. So I asked, well, Mimi actually got me this, this chart from Montgomery County that lists out in all of Montgomery County, the municipalities and the millage rates that they charge for real estate taxes. I've sorted this by the Township Borough Millage. You can see that's in the light blue. And if you turn to the next page, you'll see that we are fifth from the bottom. We have, we are the fifth lowest millage for municipal township tax rate. Um, let me see what else. Oh, just, we, the last time we increased, the tax increase with real estate was 2011. It went up from 1.117 mils to 1.223 mils. That's a .106 mils or a nine and a half percent increase. I, I find real estate taxes, when I went to do this, a little convoluted. So the next slide kind of breaks it down a little bit, just because they use assessment instead of market value. They use millage instead of a percent, just to kind of confuse everyone. So on this, on this page, the top chart there in the left-hand corner, I requested from Montgomery County a total assessed value by class in our township. So what they did is they broke down the classes between commercial, industrial, residential, farmland, and exempt. And you can see the assessment values that they have there and the unit count of each. Basically, Lower Gwinnett has 1.5 billion, a little over 1.5 billion in assessed values in properties. Okay. And there's the unit count. If you look at the residential, there's the, there's 3,000, 3,978 residential homes with an average assessed value of $289,147. So Montgomery County lasted an assessment in 1996. So in 1996, your assessed value was supposed to equate to what the market value of your home was. But every year, everything changes or whatnot and goes through. So the state has something that they call a common level ratio. And they use a whole bunch of different statistics to come up with this. But every year, they come up with it. And they're on a fiscal year, so it covers from July 2025 through June 30th, 2026. And that period, the CLR factor is 3.25. So that's, that equates to, and the CLR of, of one divided by 3.25, or 31% of your market value is your assessed value. If you take the average residential residence at 289,000, and you multiply it by the CLR, the market value of that property is $939,727. So basically, the average value of a residential home in Lower Gwinnett Township is the $939,000. So if we go to the next page, I wanted to kind of equate this to where we are with regards to the real estate taxes. So we, we took exactly what I just showed you, and I add the little block up to the left. So the total real estate tax millage, if you live in Lower Gwinnett Township, is 32.519 mils. And we break that out between the school district, which also includes a library of 25.654. Montgomery County plus the community college is 5.642. And Lower Gwinnett Township is at the 1.223. If you take that average residential assessment of the 289 and times it by the millage, you'll see in total, it's $9,400. And of that, you can see 7,400 is the school, 1,600 is the county, and Lower Gwinnett gets $354 or 4% of the real estate tax. Okay, so that you know what that is. We have budgeted 1.7 million in 2026 for real estate tax collection this year.
I just want to thank you for pulling that out and, and presenting to us. While I did know that, I think for the average citizen, breaking, like, even though you see your receipt and you see where your taxes are going, understanding like how low our millage is and how little of the money is actually going to the township, and then how much is going to the county and how much is going to the school district. I think people have a generalized idea. But I think to see it like that very clearly and very distinctly is helpful. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, it helped me too. I wanted to kind of fully understand it if I was going to sit here and take questions on it. So.
And Melinda, just to clarify, well, we went through all these different types of taxes. The real estate, Lower Gwinnett Township real estate millage rate is the only tax
we have control of. We control. Yes, all the others. We, I consider all the other taxes we control sort of indirectly because we take care of the township and we maintain it, and we do things with the parks and the rec and, and whatnot. People want to live here, and that's how, you know, why the population is why we get the other taxes. But the real estate tax is the only tax that we can actually control. We can change the number. We could change, yes.
And the last time that it was updated was 2011?
Yes.
Which is 14 years ago.
Yes.
Now, to some degree, I, I know when I first came to the board, there was conversation around the trip, you know, the, the bond rating, the AAA, and the mood, and how Moody's categorizes you. And I think there was at one point an auditor who kind of said not raising the taxes also can be a hindrance to some degree.
Yes, it lowers, they, they, Moody's likes to see small tax increases as opposed to one large one later on, just because they know that everything goes up, you know, and you want to make sure that you have reserves and things like that. So they do like to see more steady tax increases that are smaller. And in, in perspective, so in 2011, we raised it nine and a half percent. But the increase in dollars, I think, is $32 more that we're getting on that residential residence of the 289, just to kind of get that in your mind. Because I kind of went through those calculations and took out my own tax bill and tried to figure everything out. Because I never broke it down like this, and it was always confusing to me with assessment and millage or whatnot. So.
That's helpful, Melinda. Thank you. Thank you.
Then if we go to the next slide, so we're going to be bringing this to the board. I have collapsed the rec fund into the general fund. Last year, we moved most of parks out of the rec fund. So the rec fund was really left with only five or six accounts. And it really shouldn't be a standalone fund because we're got to transfer money in there anyway. So we collapsed that into the general fund in the budget. You'll see that for the expenses, it's in Department 451, okay, for the expenses. So what we have to do is there's millage that's signed to the recreation. So we've got to pull that up and increase it in the general fund. So all we're doing is collapsing the millage from the rec into the general fund, making it go from .877 to 1.047. There's no increase in the tax rate. It's just the component of it we're moving up. And I'm going to present this resolution so that you guys can pass that, just so you, you know, okay, for next year.
And we're still able, even though it's collapsed into the general fund, we can still track what we're spending on recreation expenses and any revenue we're generating from recreation. We can still keep track of that. There's just not a separate millage.
It's just, yeah, and it, yes. And it's, and it's not a separate fund. But yes, we can. Yes. The way I put the, the expense accounts in 451 and the revenue accounts are very explicit as to what they are in the rec.
Thank you.
Um, the next graph, this is the general. The next graph, this is the general operating fund expenses. So as I did last year for the expenses, what I did was I broke them out into the different departments that we have. And if you look on the master budget that's attached, that first column on the left-hand side, I've kind of grouped them, because they're sort of in order to tell you which individual accounts are part of admin or finance or the police, so that you can see it. They're also separated out by department on the expenses. So I know like police are four-ten, public works is four-thirty, and, and you'll denote that when you see the master budget, you can correlate them across. Basically, each department that we have in here, except for the fire and ambulance and the debt, each department contains wages, payroll taxes, benefits, and department-specific technology, supplies, dues, communications and professional services. So each department has, have those components. The police, which is the big orange part of the pie there, is forty-eight percent of our total expenses for the budget. But that department also includes the repairs and maintenance for the vehicles and also the fuel. And, and also they're manned twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, so just to bring that. And then if we look at the public works, um, slice of pie there, it's blue, it's fifteen percent. But the public works also includes repairs and maintenance for their vehicles, equipment, tools, fuel, the park maintenance and the snow removal and the snow supplies are also in that department. If we look at admin, so admin is like the, uh, you guys, the, the township manager, all of that. That also includes the expenses for the township solicitor, staff engagement, the newsletter, website. It also includes all of the computer hardware and company-wide software, laptops, printers, and like the Microsoft software that everybody uses, it's, it's all in one bucket. And it also includes seventy-five percent of the workers' comp insurance and ninety-two percent of the property liability insurance is part of that admin slice of pie at twelve percent. Then we have planning and zoning. Planning and zoning is the brown slice of pie up there, it's seven percent. And that department also includes the professional services for inspection, engineering, traffic engineering and legal expense. Then we go up to, um, I have building, which is three percent. So the building includes all of the landlines and all of the building supplies, paper towels, toilet paper, things like that, including the park buildings. So that component includes all of that. Finance, finance is five percent, it's that dark green wedge. So finance includes everything that I had said before, but it also includes the tax collector and the Burckheimer commissions. Okay, you see that? And then recreation, so recreation is the small sliver of green up there, that is two percent. And that includes fall fest, the concerts, the events, things like that, along with what I had mentioned above. And then we have debt service, which is three percent, and fire and ambulance. So the fire and ambulance includes the, um, the, it includes the relief and the relief payment on that, but the, the, the contributions to the fire and to the ambulance. Our total budgeted expenses for the operating funds are eleven million, two forty-six and seven dollars. Are there any questions on that? So if we go to the, so this to me is one of the most important slides that you're going to look at, because what this is doing is, is I'm taking the different types of revenues that I just explained and the department expenses that are in the twenty twenty-six budget. And I'm kind of laying them out here so you can see the surplus or the deficit and what it includes. So if we're looking at the revenues.
I just have one question. I'm sorry to make you go back.
No, no.
Just tell me what piece of the pie, like funding for EAC, thinking, thinking of our tree giveaway or cleanup.
Okay, so those are different funds. These are the operating funds.
Okay, so it's not in rec. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a part of the rec.
No, no.
Okay.
So if we look at the.
One clarification, so like we do have in admin, there's an account that has money for just general boards and commissions. That's in there, same as, yes.
So it's in the admin.
That part's in the admin. The tree giveaway is in the store.
I was choosing tree giveaway as an example, but like all of the stuff for the boards and commissions is, is in admin.
I thought that's what you meant. You were answering the tree giveaway question.
I was thinking tree.
Yeah, just think, just forget it. I just was using an example. Okay, so it's in the admin.
And you picked the one, right? The one I heard anyway.
Bad example.
Okay, it's in admin. Thank you.
So if we look here at the revenue, so the real estate taxes, they're remaining stable. Transfer taxes, we are budgeting a little higher in the transfer taxes. That really depends on the sales of property and economic conditions, but we're assuming interest rates have gone down. They're probably going to go down a couple more times, which would make mortgage rates more reasonable, and people might be purchasing more homes and selling homes. The earned income tax and right below it, the mercantile and the business privilege. So I reached out to Burckheimer, there's a gentleman there that I, I deal with, James, who's wonderful, and said, hey, can you give me estimates of what you think the projections are going to be for twenty twenty-five and for twenty twenty-six? He sent them over. Mimi and I sat down and went through them. And because it's revenue, we were conservative and picked the lower end of his grouping to put in there. It looks like we're doing less for the business privilege tax and mercantile, but we're not, because remember, we're not budgeting for the prior taxes that we got, so it is actually a slight increase. Permits and licenses, that's an estimate, that, that can vary a lot. But we basically look at what has happened over the past years and kind of come up with an amount that we think works in there. Interest, so interest, we're budgeting about twenty-four thousand dollars more. And I, I want to say that I know interest rates are coming down, but we did an RFP, because you guys had asked for us to do an RFP tip for banks. And we switched from one bank to Citadel. And the differential on the interest that we're earning on those three accounts is ridiculous. So we're doing much better with that. It was a very good thing to do. And so that's why it's kind of up a little bit on the operating funds that we have going on there.
Yeah, I like when you call money that we're gaining ridiculous. I mean, that sounds positive.
It was a really good thing to do the RFP and to check out different banks and to go with a, a credit union and what they offered. We didn't have any fees like on our payroll account. We moved both the general and a sewer account over there, and we are making a lot more on interest. So it was a really good move. It was a very good move. Our state aid, we get letters from the state for.
Got to do a little bit of singing the praises of the finance director. So because I, I have seen a lot of this information. So as of, was it three years ago, we were collecting about three hundred thousand in interest, and now we're collecting one point three million dollars in interest. So, and some of that is switching banks, which was done at the behest of the board. Some of that is also because Melinda's been taking a lot of time to really pay attention and, and take a lot of care with this. So she has moved money, even in Pliggett, a different bank that, that, where the bank, that institution has remained the same, but may just be more careful to move money into accounts that are interest-bearing, minimizing the amount that can't. So some of that is also because of Melinda's good.
I should, I mean, you should get a standing ovation. It is really late at night, but thank you so much.
That's like free money. I mean, that's great.
I have written down here on one of my last slides to present to you. In twenty twenty-two, it was three hundred and twenty-six thousand. In twenty twenty-three is a million, and in twenty twenty-four is a million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
That is incredible.
Twenty twenty-five, we're doing a million, three twenty-eight. But we did do a bond issuance, and that bond money is sitting in an account, because it's not subject to arbitrage and it's earning. But we took three point three million out of the open space reserve and, and spent that. So we only added like a million, but we're doing really well now. And I'm just trying to keep all the money sort of out of the checking accounts and into the money market accounts, so that it works better. And that, I think that's helping us overall.
Absolutely.
I think you're helping every, every resident of Lower Gwinnett. We thank you tremendously.
Thank you.
So our state aid, so our state aid is our fire state aid, and we get pension monies in the general operating funds. And we get letters from the state, and that's small increases from the two of those. I've already received the letters and I put in what our estimate would be. Our subdivision zoning and conditional use fees, so we have a large increase on that. But I spoke with Jamie, and we do have some building projects that we think are going to be incurring in twenty twenty-six. So we sort of estimated those in, those calculations, and that's why that is higher. The bank lease and the sewer allocation, that thirty-five hundred is, the Wells Fargo lease is March to April, and there's a small increase, and that is the increase that occurred. The cable, um, the violations, recycling and miscellaneous. So we have that going down. We're getting a lower recycling grant. They're basing it now on pounds and not population. But also the cable monies that we would get, people are dropping cable and they're paying for streaming, and we don't get that on streaming services, so that's why that is lower. And then on the transfers, so that transfer that we're looking at is from the sewer, and it comes into the operating funds to pay for a portion of the defined contribution plan for retirement. Now, it didn't increase twenty thousand. What occurred was, in the defined contribution plan, when someone comes in and you start to put the, the amount of money, whether it's four percent or six percent in there, and they leave before they're fully vested, that unvested portion sits in there and it's in a forfeiture account. So I used that instead of taking monies out of the general fund against it, and that's why it's lower. So it's not that it increased that much, it's because I used forfeiture money. And the forfeiture money didn't come back in here for us to put it in as a revenue. So it was just sitting at actually Mission Square, who was holding it, and I saw that and just started to use that instead of taking more money out. So overall, we're projecting a, an increase of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, which is two point two percent overall increase from the projection for twenty-five to twenty-six. But that sort of makes sense with the economy, and we didn't increase real estate taxes or anything like that. So it's sort of, you know, just maintaining. When we look at the expenses for the funds, before going through the line items, if you look at the bottom, so we're looking at the twenty twenty-six expenses are going to be eleven million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, and the projected for twenty twenty-five is ten million, five oh seven. That's a seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar increase. That's seven percent of an increase. So before I go through each individual thing, I want to tell you what the major components of that are. So our health insurance, which is in every department except for debt and the fire, okay? And the workers' comp and the property and liability increase six point four percent, all right? So our health insurance is a major component in the operating funds because of personnel. So that really drove a lot of the seven percent. Then I want to explain that last year in the fall, we created a new account, Mimi created a new account, technology, okay? Before, some of technology was, it might have been in contracted services or subscriptions, but most of it wasn't in the operating funds. It was sitting in the capital funds, because we had this thing in the basement called the server room. We had servers down there, and we had uninterruptible power supplies, and we had to maintain the cooling, so everything was cool and everything would keep working. And that expenses on that are very sporadic. So every couple of years, you might have something that was large, so it was in the capital account. Now that we have technology and we've finally had the conversion all to the cloud, and I know Michelle's very happy about that, we finally made it. But when you go to the cloud, we don't have any more servers. We don't need to maintain that. Now, basically, what you're doing is you're paying for your technology annually, because the software that you have, you're paying for their cloud storage, for their security. They're holding the backups and all of your data up there. So you're paying an annual fee or a monthly fee for that. That's very consistent. It is operating, so we've kind of moved some of the technology that was based in the capital accounts up into the operating. So, and each one of our departments has that also, except for debt and fire. And that's kind of where I think the seven percent overall increase is coming from, between the insurances, a six point four percent, and then switching some of those sporadic costs of our capital up to more of an annual type expense. That's where you're seeing most of that. If we do go through, when we look at the admin and we see, you know, the hundred and three thousand, remember that they pay for all the company-wide software and all the laptops and things like that. And Michelle is working on a work sheet where she lists out all of our, our laptops, our iPads, things like that, and she's doing a replacement schedule. I think it's for ten years. So each year now, we'll be able to budget based on how old the computers are. Finance, that also increased again from the things that I spoke of. And, you know, now we pay Munis, which is Tyler Tech, you know, a large chunk that we never had to before, because everything is up in the cloud, including all of our backups, our, our upgrades and things like that.
Melinda, do you, do you guys anticipate that we would ever change health insurance carriers for the township? Is that something we review every few years?
It is something to look at every few years. It is really difficult to beat the rates that Divit, that the Delaware Valley Health Trust gets.
Okay.
From Aetna, that's so, much like I was talking about with that county-wide tax, tax collection committee, Divit is a, is a cooperative, basically, of municipalities and school districts, some municipal authorities, local governments, that, that comes together and, and kind of as, as a pool. They pool the buying power of all of these entities and pitch that together. And they go, they look back and forth, I think, every so many years. They've stayed with Aetna for years and years. They just have a good deal with them. So I, I have looked over the years. I, I'll tell you, I've been burned from experience a couple times, shopped around. Blue Cross will give you a great deal for, and like lock it in for two years. And then the third year, whatever the next year is, you get so much higher. It's just, it's, you know, and then it's harder, it's just hard on everybody, switching insurance again. I, I agree with you, it is worth looking around, but I do know just it's, it's very difficult to beat the, the cost that Divit's going to get. And part of it is also too, they, they've worked this out with, with Aetna to have a great deal of flexibility in the plans. So we have a health insurance plan that's required in the collective bargaining agreement we have with the police union. So if we were shopping around, what Blue Cross, because that's the only other game in town, is going to want you to do is, you know, if you want to save money, then you've got to make all of these changes, just like, you know, in the private sector that, that companies have done. And we couldn't for half of our staff. That's locked in by contract. So we'd only be shopping around, the only time to shop around, in other words, is when you're looking at a new contract for the police. Because otherwise, we are, we are small if we're only Lower Gwinnett Township, and we'd be really small if it's only the non-uniform staff that were shopping around.
Okay.
Yeah, and Divit's like a captive for an insurance company because of who they service. So you do get like the rate stabilization funds, and we get dividends and stuff from them, which is usually very hard to beat.
Good.
Okay, so I did want to point out, like, there looks like there's a large increase in the public works, but we shifted the snow supplies for salt that used to be paid out of the capital fund for liquid fuels up into public works, because we're saving that, the money that we received and using some of the reserves for our paving projects. So that's why that increased. And our debt service and the, uh, some of the recreation costs, it looks like it went down. That's because we shifted some up to public works, because it just, it, it made more sense to be up there, like some of their utilities and things like that for the building, since we collapsed it into the general fund. So again, the overall expenses are seven percent higher. But I also want to point out, and I think this is really good. So if you look at the surplus, before we make transfers to the capital funds, we have a surplus. We have one point one in the projection, and we have seven hundred and twenty in the budget. That is after we pay the debt service of the five million that we took out in twenty twenty-four. So I just think that that's a really good thing. Interest is helping with that, obviously, if you look at that. And then even if you look, so we have budgeted for twenty-five and for twenty-six, a transfer to the capital funds of five hundred thousand dollars. But as you can see, twenty twenty-five is looking like it's still going to have a surplus after that. So as we get closer, Mimi and I sit down and we discuss what we're looking at for a surplus. And if we find that it is higher and it is like that, we'll increase the transfer through a board resolution, so we can get that into the capital funds, because right now we are carrying a good reserve in the general operating funds, and we can put it there for projects.
Okay. That's awesome. That's really good news.
Good news, right? Okay. The next graph is the sewer funds, which includes the sewer operating fund, which is a business-like fund. It's, it's one of our few business-like funds, and it also includes. And it also includes the sewer capital fund. So um, the sewer revenues that come in, those are all from the treatment of sewage that we bill, bill out. And the major expense is the sewer treatment. I do want to point out that the operating fund handles the Ambler capital projects. Okay, because we don't own those and that's part of operating. In twenty twenty-four, their uh, capital projects were seven hundred and fifty thousand. There are only a hundred and fifty thousand for twenty-five and for the budget for twenty-six, what they've told us. So sometimes that can vary greatly and that doesn't go through our capital fund. The only thing that goes through our capital fund are what we own. Okay, um, so we are looking at um, total revenues of three point uh, uh, three million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand and the total expenses of two point nine million. If the uh, capital projects or something shifts, sometimes we'll do a transfer from the operating, if there's a surplus, into the uh, capital. But if the sewer operating doesn't have a surplus because of something like the Ambler capital, capital projects, we'll transfer from the capital into the sewer operating. We do have reserves in there and the interest is very helpful. You can see the interest on the sewer funds is three hundred and thirty-four thousand, which is really helping keep the operating afloat. And those reserves are allowing us to, to be able to keep those self-funding between the two funds. The last time I think that we did a rate increase on the sewer was two thousand and seventeen, just so you know. Okay, for what we, we charge for that. Are there any questions on the sewer funds?
Yeah, I, I didn't quite understand what you said about if Ambler decides to um, have a big expense, that that doesn't affect how much we're committed to pay to them?
The, so if the operating is, is pretty flat, once they give us a budget for that, we're pretty much set for the year. The capital, hopefully what they give us for the budget, we'll, we'll know for sure. But even sometimes through the year, that can fluctuate. But if, if we're actually, Fred and I are having, I'm going to Ambler tomorrow and there's a meeting about the, the sewer system and presumably about the budget. If they came back with updated numbers and the capital was much larger than what we have in the budget right now, we would then do a transfer from our separate sewer capital fund into the sewer operating fund to cover it. So there wouldn't be a deficit in the sewer operating fund. But we'd like to have both of the Ambler treatment accounts, their operating and the capital, all in the operating fund. One, so you see the whole cost. And two, because those are operating costs, those aren't our facilities, it's not our plant.
Yeah, and do we, I guess you'll know after tomorrow, foresee that Ambler's going to make any uh, improvements, expensive improvements in the next few years?
They, they've been saying for a few years that in the next few years, that's going to be some expensive. So some of that just takes time. We see that here too. It's, it, you know, it can take a while to, to do the planning for it, figure out the design, maybe figure out how to pay for it on their end as well. So I guess we'll, we'll know more tomorrow of how, how soon that may be coming.
Okay, thanks.
Um, the sewer capital fund is purchasing, um, so some of our vehicles and equipment, we split, say, between public works and sewer. Sometimes the truck is just for sewer. So we are purchasing a hundred and eighteen thousand of vehicles, equipment and televising to check for needed repairs in the, in the pipes. Plus, there's a small portion of the LGT building and um, that, that is going to the sewer capital. And the lifting of manholes when we do paving, um, that goes to the sewer capital fund. The next one is our capital funds revenue. So our capital funds are broke, are the capital fund and the open space fund, I've combined, okay? And they handle the infrastructure rebuilding, the large maintenance projects, park upgrades and improvements, the land purchase, and it's going to handle our public works building. Traffic impact. The traffic impact fund, um, gets the impact fees from new development and impact fees are considered Act two oh nine. And Act two oh nine is restricted for projects in the approved Act two oh nine capital improvement plan. Some years, we receive grants and those grants are not restricted to Act two oh nine, but they're restricted for the project we received the grant for. Um, I will say that last year, we used up all of the Act two oh nine reserves. We had to finish the intersection, the multimodal intersection over here. We also have the, the highway aid fund, which I call liquid fuels. We receive from the state, from the gas tax, a certain amount of money. That is restricted and they uh, audit that uh, almost every year. That's just for paving projects. It has to go through the approval process. That fund actually uses its own checks from the checking accounts, so we're not mixing funds in it. It does have some reserve in it. And I do know that this year, we're going to be using some of that reserve because our paving project is a little more than we're receiving in the funding. Um, and then uh, if, then the next fund or the last fund is the stormwater, which receives the fee in lieu of trees. We use that for tree use only, but that's new trees, tree trimming and removal of trees. If the cell tower lease is approved, um, the lease proceeds will go into the stormwater fund for natural resource protection. Let me see here. So I wanted to point out here, we brought it up earlier, that our um, reserves earn interest, which is sixteen percent. You can see the pocket there is sixteen percent of our revenue. Forty-seven percent are grants. You can see, you know, liquid fuels, we get ten percent, impact fee twelve percent. But the interest here is kind of key, that we have reserves and we're earning interest. So a lot of times we get grants, but the grants are reimbursable grants. So we have to put out the money and we put it out, we're, we were done paying for it. We put it back into the grants. I know Jamie does that and they look at all the invoices, whatever, and then they give us the money. But that could be like a year or two years in between. Sometimes it takes a really good, uh, long time. So the reserves that we have in the capital funds are not only giving us a lot of interest income, but it's giving us the flexibility to use those reserves um, for grants that we get so we can keep improving things without having to go out and borrow money because that, that can get really expensive. It's very important.
We're utilizing the interest for the matching dollars oftentimes for the grants that we need to have a matching component.
Yeah, yeah, so I, and I have over here, if we're looking at interest of one point three million dollars a year between all of our funds, that's a lot of money that's coming into the township. So the reserves that we currently have right now are key to us keeping financially, fiscally responsible to be able to get the grants and to use the grants. I know that our reserves allowed me when we did the bond issuance, because it was under five million and it's not subject to arbitrage. I didn't want to use that money for the land purchase because I know we're probably going to have to do another bond issuance in twenty twenty uh, six late. So if we do that, I want to use that bond issuance to pay back the reserves that I use to purchase the land. And that's just really fiscally responsible because now we have the, the interest that's earning on the five million. It can sit in there. We don't have to pay it back if it's over the amount we're paying out. And also, the new tranche is larger and you have to spend that. You have to spend so much within six months, within a year, within three months. So by using um, the, the land purchase and reimbursing ourselves for that, that gives us the flexibility and really allows us to, to move things around. And it was, it's just a really good thing that we had the ability to do that. So I just sort of wanted to, to stress that that's a very important aspect of what we, what we have here.
What is the sale of fixed assets?
So um, when we replace like trucks or whatever, we take the old one and we sell it.
Okay.
So if we purchase it and we split it between um, the capital look funds and the sewer capital fund, when we sell it, we do the same thing and that's the money that comes in for those.
Okay.
Then if we go to, and for the expenses, I, uh, because we, we went through uh, that, I want to show you here. So this is a, an ex, an excerpt from our ten-year vehicle and capital plan. So um, in the fall this year, we realized Fred keeps a list of assets. I keep a list of like our assets with our vehicles and our equipment or whatnot. And Mimi was doing this for the ten-year replacement. And what we did was I sat down with Fred and we kind of combined all of them. So now we have a comprehensive list of all of our vehicles, the cost, the year they were purchased. We have the tag number, we have the EZ Pass transponder number in there. And then Fred went down and if you look on this, the RWN means replace with new. And he has the year in there that he thinks we're going to need to replace it. So I took out the snippet because I filtered it just for twenty twenty-six. But this is a ten-year plan that goes down. So this is telling us, okay, we're going to have to replace this equipment and these vehicles. This is how much the, it's, it's going to cost us based on our, an inflation rate of two point five percent. You can see that he put in there. And then he spreads it between the capital fund and the sewer fund. And then he also takes the sales value of the assets that we're getting rid of and replacing. And that's in the green portion. Now, if you add up the, the green portion for the sale of fixed assets, you're going to see it's, it's seventy-five hundred for the sewer and thirty-two thousand for the capital. But our budget is more than that. And that's because there were some items that we're going to sell, but they didn't sell in twenty twenty-five. They're going to be in twenty twenty-six. A lot of times, like if you order a police car, you order it and you pay for it, but you can't get it working because you have to get it fit out or whatever. So you have to wait to sell the old one, that type of a thing. So there's a small timing difference in there. But um, that, that's, that is uh, all here on this uh, plan. And this is, this is a really good plan, it's perpetual, this worksheet. We know where it's saved and that's the one that we all update. And it's just, it's a really good thing to have. Because if you look at the next slide, so this worksheet on the second sheet basically takes all of that information and says, okay, for the budget years, and you can see in, in the blue there on the left, twenty-five through twenty-nine, the average capital funding there of the two seventy-three, two eighteen, that's the amount that we need out of the capital reserve fund just to maintain what we currently have. So that's the average of every single year, what we have to have in that fund just to maintain the current vehicle, vehicles we have and the equipment we have that we're running the township with.
And is this a combination of public works vehicles and police vehicles together?
Yes, and then capital reserve, yes. And, and the sewer fund to the right, the portion over there to the right, that's sixty-two thousand. So in total, to maintain the current equipment that we have and the current vehicles that we have, we need to put aside three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars um, in the capital in the sewer fund.
Over five-year period of time?
No, no, every year.
Okay.
That's the average every year.
Oh, three thirty-five, ninety-nine, twenty-two.
If you add all of them and divide by five, that's about the amount of the surplus that you have to put in so that, that we need that in there. So whether it's coming from the reserve interest or we're moving it from the operating funds in, that's what we need, just so we can maintain what we currently have to take care of the township.
This doesn't include the new gators that Fred needs?
So that is in the vehicle plan, put in. So we do have that now. So what, what we're kind of saying now is we put everything in there. We have replace with new if we're replacing it. And there might be a couple of items in there that are going to be brand new, that we're not replacing something with. And there's not many of them.
So this is just the maintenance of what we already have and making sure it's in good working order. This is not accounting for any new vehicles or any new equipment that we would need.
A little bit of planned of like, there is, so, yes, but for the most part, it's replacing what we have or, or planned expansions. Much of that for public works more to be considered when there's a new garage. Because obviously, part of the challenge here is we don't have any place to put that, so.
Does this include expense for insurance on the vehicles?
No.
That, that's in a different account?
Yes, that's in the operating uh, funds.
Okay.
Yes, this is just the purchase, these are the capital funds, just the purchase of capital assets. But that, that figure, I don't think we ever had before and I, I want you guys to follow up.
I never saw it before, yeah.
Really important. Oh, Mimi put this worksheet together. It, it, it was great. And then with meeting with Fred and trying to come up with a comprehensive thing, this is really good. Because now we go by this. So next year, we kind of know what we need now and what we're replacing. I mean, we can push things out farther and bring it back, but according to Mimi, like if it's not on the plan, don't ask for it.
Yeah, well, and it's, it's good, it's good planning. So thank you all for doing that. Because if you look at the replacement costs, you know, some of them are over a hundred thousand dollars. So if we're planning for that, that makes a lot more sense than if Fred has to come to us at a meeting and say he needs a hundred thousand dollar truck or something, so.
And I think that's how it always was. It was always like a shock, like, oh, you need a new car? Like, why do you need a new car? The old one not working? Um, and it's like, oh, that's a hundred thousand dollars. But now that we know what it is and we can plan over the span of ten years, I'm sure that there'll be some things that are not within there.
And we have the entire worksheet, but it's very long. So I only took a little snippet out and I didn't include it in your packet. But uh, I can like at the next meeting or whatnot. But if you ever want to come in and like review it or go through it, I'll sit down with you and go through it. No, it's, it's a very good worksheet. It took a lot of time to put together. But the information that we're going to get out of it now and we're keeping it up to date makes budgeting and, and realizing what we need a lot easier.
Yeah, I agree. And I think I mentioned this when we met, um, the finance committee met, but I do think something like this would be, I know you were, you're doing it with technology and we're doing it with the vehicles. And I think something like this, moving forward as we start improving the parks and we have more.
That would be ideal. That would be ideal.
Playground, quit man and, you know, my visions. Like, when we get, when we get those brands and um, we can improve the parks.
That I know we're going to get for Oxford Park for that boy that needs it desperately.
Just to understand what we actually need just to maintain what we currently have without anything new, no new projects.
Right.
I think it's really important for us to know because it makes us fiscally responsible. So when we look at any surplus or whatnot, we know, hey, this is already spoken for.
It's already spoken for because we got to replace this.
Right.
That's good planning, thank you.
Um, and then.
We are also going to do, we, it, the, the next plan that's in process is for our buildings. Where we've been pulling that together for the township building and the um, Pendleton Woods Community Building. So we'll put that together and then parks will be the next one we'll jump.
Parks will be next.
But we do have the flexibility if we have a mid-year emergency, we have reserves.
That's why I say let's keep our reserves. Because between the interest and the flexibility and emergencies, we need them. You don't want to have to go out and try to borrow. It puts you in a really bad situation.
And that, we, we do have very good reserves still. And I think um, a, as I've looked in past budgets, trying, you know, when I first started here, trying to get a sense of, of how things have been done and a little bit of the, the history. I know, I could see where there had been, there was definitely discussion and there was a lot of paperwork for the, the different capital purchases and the capital projects to justify it. But I, but there, I don't think there was this kind of planning done for how many, what kind of reserves do you need and what does get spoken for each year. It was more, I think in the end, you have millions of dollars in reserves, so there's money there and you could go and get it. And I, I just, I didn't feel comfortable with that. I, I wanted, I know there's these things and I think it does make sense to do this for parks as well. It's fifty grand or something, right, to reset, forty grand maybe to resurface a tennis court or, you mean, meaning it's like significant, that's just maintenance, that's not building a new court. There's things like that that come up and I, I definitely agree, it's a really good idea to do that. So we have a whole, you've seen the very detailed use of reserve plan that we have too, where we have our capital projects. And, and we've sort of, you know, we're guessing a little bit of when they might happen. For future years, we're guessing about whether we'll get grants and how much. I go back and forth between being conservative and being optimistic, depends on what I need that day. But it's, you know, and then what we're going to use for our match, what would just be that portion of it. And, and that's well and good, but then there's sort of just this bread and butter stuff. Every year, there's some piece of it that's going into vehicles. And, and maybe not literally every year for the building, but if you sort of know over time, it averages out to fifty thousand a year. There's like a, a piece that you know just to keep there that we need for, to take care of what we already have.
We talked about the buildings and the parks. We're work, working on the buildings, then we'll do the parks. We have this for the roads already too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we already have the roads planned out. You know, that, that's a little more fluid because they deteriorate at a different rate depending on the conditions and stuff. But we already have the same exact plan for the roads, so.
That's, that's the one place where I've seen it anticipated, like we know we're going to do.
Yeah, we kind of have an idea of where we're going to be paving for the next couple of years, next ten at least.
There you go. I like it.
That was because um, Fred put that together with help from Gilmore. That was a great planning tool to really see, we need to be supplementing what we get from the state for the, the, through the gas tax for liquid fuels each year. So that's going to be coming out of capital reserves as well, which was why we're recommending to take the um, snow, the, you know, ice uh,
Salt.
Salt, thank you, out of the liquid fuels, so the ice treater thingy.
Nine o'clock, it's a lull.
Getting tired, running out of gas. Because that was a, out of liquid fuels and it, that, it varies a little bit. It's in some ways, I like it in liquid fuels because of that, because we don't know what kind of winter we're going to have. But really, we need liquid fuels just for paving. It just didn't make sense to be depleting that more and then pulling it out of capital reserve and not know. and not knowing how much we're going to need. We it's going to be easier to watch that a little bit, I think, having that in the general fund with the rest of the public works operating expenses.
Are are we anticipating at all a decrease of liquid fuels in the next few years?
No, they fix that, sort of. So there had been talk for a while about, um, you know, there was concern that as there we use less gas as as there are more electric vehicles, that the gas tax, which and I still call it the gas tax, but there's now a new fee that's being imposed on electric vehicles.
Yes, there is.
Thank you, electric. Um, so it what, you know, it's weather that may go down a little bit. There there had been concern for a while that that there could be some significant decreases just because of um, different.
So that fee is making up for the loss in gasoline.
So it's new.
Yeah.
So assuming they they got it right.
It yeah, it was kind of a, kind of a shock getting that in the mail.
Um, the other thing that we're go- that Mimi and I are working on is we're going to have a fund report that um, tells you the fund, the cash balance, and also what's restricted, what's assigned? Because there's, you know, we we look at our reserves and we may not realize that like Act two oh nine is in the traffic and you you can't spend that, or we have it assigned for the trees and you can't spend that. Liquid fuels, you can't spend. So it would be good to look at each fund and the reserves in each fund, but kind of realize what's spoken for. And then put into that, if you can overlay into that, hey, if we're going to do this project and we want this grant, this amount of money we need, we have to, this is the amount of money we need. So if we have to match the grant. So we're trying to work through right now a funding report that we can give to you that kind of encompasses all of that. So you have a better idea also of what types of reserves we have that we could actually spend in an emergency if something came up or or to use in that capacity. So so that's coming. Okay, great. Um, and then for the balance of the expenses, if we go to the last slide, last slide, you guys. The last slide. So this is the um, capital plan. You guys have the full five year capital plan that I gave you. This is a snippet where I just listed out for the two oh two six budget. Um, the uh, total capital fund expenses are um, for the budget are four million, nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. If you look at this budget and you add in the vehicles or whatever, it's a little higher because you've got to remember the sewer capital fund, which is part of sewer, not here, is picking up some of those expenses. So it won't tie dollar for dollar, but it 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 does tie. I made sure I went through all of that and I could explain the differences. But this lists out um, the uh, projects that we plan on doing in twenty twenty six. So I'm sort of just given uh, this, and I know the dollar value, but staff is here. If you guys have any questions about any of the projects that I have listed here. But um, unless you have other questions for me, I'm I'm done with the.
I just have one, these are grants we've already been awarded in this call.
This is not anticipated grants, these are grants.
Awarded or applied for.
You flagged the ones that I think I know them, okay.
Only ones that we are waiting for right now are the Ellis. Uh, actually, I'm not even including right now the LSA grant for the public works facility that we have received. Um,
Is it the um, where it says Oxford Park.
In Tennis Avenue, we're waiting to hear about the Arlie grant for that. Oxford Park, we have received that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's only showing what we've received. I guess it's actually only re- received other than I was optimistic about the traffic signals. I'm not sure why. I I actually thought I had included the LSA grants for the public works facility and for Oxford Park in here, and I didn't.
So the only thing is the the traffic signals?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've been awarded the one for for Welsh Road and for Trelawney Avenue and Penland Pike. We've applied for the one for Bethlehem Pike and Tennis Avenue.
There's just the one traffic signal.
That we're that we are waiting to hear from, yes.
So roughly over five million dollars.
Mm hmm.
We've received, they were counting for it as it released for these projects.
Projects.
For our current projects.
Mm hmm.
That's awesome.
That is awesome.
But I want to thank the staff and all the hard work that you guys, because that is a tremendous feat.
Yeah, that is. Um, writing tran- uh, grants is not trivial, so that is very much appreciated. That's again, free money essentially.
It's our taxpayer dollars that we're getting back to use for improvements to Lower Gwinnett, so it's a huge.
Well, free money, meaning it doesn't come out of our um, local tax base necessarily.
The um, under the cost column, the twenty twenty six budget column, the four point two million, is that additional cost for the project or that's what we expect to spend? That it includes the grant money we've received?
That's what we think is we might spend in twenty twenty six if all of these projects move forward as we hope they will.
And would it be, that is in addition to the grants we've received?
The grants will be re- will reimburse us in time.
Okay.
For those costs.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, there is no way we're going to spend four point two million dollars next year.
We could try.
We can, but we're going to try. That's what's there.
My man. That would be like, for example, my guy who I'm I'm really advocating for him to get his Gaga pit. But we're to the seventy five thousand dollars.
When you're ready.
Seventy five thousand is what we plan to spend of the two hundred and fifty thousand um, that we're identifying that's needed.
It's actually more than that even. So if you look in your.
Yeah, look at the actual, not the snippet.
I didn't want to go, I saw, I started to look, I started to look at it and I see how you broke it all out. So it's, we're going to spend like eighty some thousand, I saw it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But this is what we think is going to be the share of those projects in twenty twenty six. So we're getting, you know, occasionally there a project moves a little faster than we expect. There's plenty of money in the capital accounts that we can, we're not going to stop them. They don't have to, there's, it's you're approving those budgets too, but this is where we think we're going to go. It's just that you then there's somewhere DEP decides we need to do something more or Penda, you know, there's just stuff happens. Or we're just, it's also an awful lot of projects and at some point, you know.
You guys need sleep. That.
Yeah.
Um, just two more points. So if we do another bond issuance in twenty twenty six, we're going to be doing it at the end of the year. So there is no debt payments for that additional bond issuance in the budget because those won't occur till twenty twenty seven. Um, and also, the budget that I included in your packet is on Excel. Um, I use this budget, it's very succinct. I am going to be inputting it into Munis, and at the November eighteenth meeting, you will have that printed out in Munis. I don't think I'm going to do the big binders, but I'm going to put it together and staple it for you so it's easier to go through. I just use this because it's really easy when I'm approving invoices and looking at invoices to find the the account numbers. And it has all of the text in here also for what it's for. Um, and this will all be input into Munis, so you'll get what you're you uh, normally get from that in our accounting software.
I just want to say thank you to all of the staff for all that you have done, but especially to our finance department and Melinda and Mimi for what you did in putting it out of this budget. This is by far, I think, the most efficient and straightforward budget that I've received since I've been on the board. As it relates to the clarity of communication, that the understanding of where everything fits in and the descriptors. And even though it is nine PM, I'm still very appreciative of of all of the detail and the time that you put together. I think it makes it much easier for the public to understand, for the board to understand, and for us to see like the intricacies of where everything is and what it means. I'm saddened that Turski is not here to be a part of it, but I'll 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 share it with him.
Sure, he'll watch.
I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm saddened that he's not online.
Yeah, the relationships are really important because you kind of save everything.
I think that's helpful and and helps put into perspective even like what we're planning to do for five to ten years out and what we need to plan to do. And and you know, the one the one off asks how that relates into the bigger picture. So I think that makes sense, but I can tell that this took a tremendous amount of time. I appreciate it tremendously.
Yeah.
You you can see.
Keeping this format for next year, but if you know of anything that you want me to add or take away or or improve, but this way we'll start to get the same format all the time and it'll be easier kind of to go through.
Keep keep the pie, keep the pie.
I like the pie. I love the pies.
Is this um, like, will the presentation slides be available?
Online.
Line for folks so they don't just get immersed in like the nitty gritty of the budget itself?
Can it, can it be shared online?
Absolutely, yeah, we will put it on the website.
Okay.
I think all of all of it, right?
We'll get, and so right now, the budget's only on the website in that it's in the meeting packet.
Yep.
But now we'll put.
Yeah.
It's a draft.
And we'll put the budget and the presentation on the webs, on the homepage, so it's easy for people to find. And at the next meeting, we'll be asking for authorization to advertise. We can put the budget online before that. That's the authorization for us to spend money to run a legal notice in the reporter that no one's ever going to read.
Right.
But we have to do that to say it's available. We'll make it available, the public or the budget available before and the presentation available before then.
Okay, yeah, but folks can see it and maybe they'll understand it.
Yeah, it's um, it it's so uh, important. And when Danielle and I ran for office, we emphasized forward-looking planning. And so I can see over the last few years, it improvements steadily as you understand the budget coming in new and uh, getting the whole staff together to project what we're going to be doing five years from now and maybe even ten years. So so that the public understands um, the strategy and um, why we can get by with so not increasing our tax base. I mean, because we are fortunate to have the interest that you're talking about in the grants. And then we live in a uh, a township in which we have a lot of earned income coming into the uh, coffers. But uh, it it's just really very important uh, that people don't get taken by surprise. Well, why are you building this public works building? Or why are you building, buying these new cars? Or, you know, it's it's uh, it's really great to see it explained um, clearly and all the thought that's gone into the planning, so I do appreciate it.
Tremendous.
I mean, I I'd just like to say uh, one thing I wrote down just so I don't mess things up is that um, you know, there's people on the team whose value just can't be fully captured in words. Um, there's intangibles that are impossible to measure. And here at Lower Gwinnett, I think we're so lucky, we have more than one person that we can say that say that about. But tonight, I just want to focus on one person. And uh, based on speaking with Janine after our last finance meeting, I think I can speak on her behalf and pretty much on the board's behalf is that, Melinda, you're one of those people. Um, you you manage your responsibilities like the budgeting and finances so efficiently and effectively. Uh, you also handle so many of the smaller other details and even handle our eight, like our HR responsibilities you handle as well. You found a a bank that has the best interest rates. You move funds strategically between accounts. So the township's money is always working for us while we're able to qualify for grants. Um, you you take the complex and you break it down to simple explanations like you did with um, the real estate tax assessments. And that really is a amazing and truly incredible incredible ability that many, most people don't have. Um, and you do things that go unseen, like creating master lists for everyone in the township to work off of. Uh, you keep, it keeps every department organized and on the same page. Um, your organization of foresight has really improved the efficiency across all, every department in the township. And I mean, you, the interest itself grew grew from three hundred thousand a year to one point three million. And you're so humble, you didn't even mention that, you didn't even have to come out and say that, so. I think just it's the the, I mean, at least that's at least a million dollars, right? Just, I think the the benefits that we as a township is just, it's beyond words and it's worth at least a million dollars. I mean, you're always, your continuous attention to every detail and your OCD, which is beyond normal. It's not normal at all. Everyone, our residents, our staff, and I think especially us here on the board, we benefit so much. So I just thank you, it's it's amazing, thank you.
It is amazing.
People, that's that's why I can.
It is amazing.
Well said, Jimmy.
Thank you, Jimmy, for saying that for us. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Melinda.
Thank you, Melinda. Next up, we have the our invoice report for October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Did any, has everyone from the board had a chance to look at it? Any questions or concerns? Any questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoice report for October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, um, included in the board package is the township engineers report and the traffic engineers report. We want to thank them both for their service and for those lovely reports. Um, and next up is the approval of the minutes from our October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five meeting. Um, has everyone had a chance to review?
Yes.
Any questions or concerns? Any questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five board meeting minutes. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the approval of the meeting minutes from our town hall, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty five. Um, has everyone had a chance to review? Any questions or concerns around those minutes?
No.
Any questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, supervisor liaison or reports are included in the board packet for you to read at your leisure. Staff updates.
I just want to thank Rachel Kang, who I think you've all met now, but our newest addition to the finance department. So I think this is your first board of supervisors meeting, so welcome her for that.
They're not a week this long.
They're not.
Rachel's now going to walk through the invoice report that she presented to you.
Thank you, Rachel, welcome to the family.
Thank you, Rachel, and I didn't want to call you out, but Mimi did it on purpose. So I was glad to see you at a board meeting. You don't have to come anymore if you don't want to.
Oh, no, it's required, you must be here. If we have to be here, you have to be here.
Any additional staff updates? Supervisor comments? Oh, I'm sorry, chief, you had something? No? Go ahead.
Fill a police car with food this Saturday, ten to noon over at the Giant. We'll have cops over there, police cars over there. All benefit Matty Dixon's food cupboard. It's usually a huge success, so we need a, you don't have to wait till ten o'clock on Saturday. You can go over tonight, you can go over tomorrow. Uh, they'll put the food aside and uh, we deliver it to Matty Dixon.
Thank you so much.
Are are you going to have a list of suggested items? I I know Matty Dixon has a list on her.
Yeah, there is a list over at Giant.
Website.
There is a list.
I should say.
I don't know it off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, that was last weekend, right? That's on here for last weekend. Okay, I was going to say it, but never mind, you're excited with the cops, so I'm I'm wonder, I'm hoping it was a resounding success. Appreciate that.
Good, even even without ginger.
Good.
Good.
We miss ginger, though.
Yeah. Thanks, Chief.
Supervisor updates and comments, Tessie?
Uh, well, I I don't uh, want to reiterate everything Jimmy said, but I I second what he said. And um, I want to thank all the staff for all your hard work. Um, it seems like we just um, overcome challenges uh, on a weekly basis. And it's a very um, fulfilling to see that. And I congratulate our staff for being so professional.
Janine? Just echo all the comments from Jimmy and Tessie. Thank you to everybody and Melinda and Mimi and all the department heads for helping put together a wonderful budget presentation that even I can understand.
Jimmy?
Uh, same, and uh, have a, everyone have a happy Halloween.
I just want to echo everything that Jimmy and Tessie said, but also just to add, and I know I'm just going to speak for me and Tessie, I think, or Tessie and I. Um, the amount of what we what we came into when we when we both came to this board looked very different than what we see today.
That's right.
And I think it's almost when you take a step back and you think about it in the in the grander scheme of things. We are doing some of the things, we're planning, we're getting the grants, we're.
Absolutely, I I feel very um, you you know, this is my um, soon to be last uh, couple of months on the board, and I feel like um, everything that I had in mind when I ran for this office i- is coming to fruition. It could be still in early planning stages, but the the staff and the other board members have um, implemented just about every, well, I'd say a hundred percent of what we ran on, at least, you know, what I I favored. And um, I'm I am promising, I'm going to be, you know, not a stranger. I'm going to come back to uh, haunt you. Um, so. Um, so uh, but uh, I I feel really good about stepping down and uh, being completely retired and except for haunting the board. So uh, so I I agree with Danielle on that point, I think, uh, come a long way.
It just, it just kind of occurred to me when we talked about the planning and all the things that you've accomplished, that we really did accomplish or at least start to begin all of the things that we ran on. And so I just appreciate the staff and and want to, and I think this is like to Jimmy's point, this is Melinda's night. We're going to let Melinda shine bright and we're going to embarrass she thoroughly. But um, so grateful, in all seriousness, so grateful for all that you have brought to the township, not to us, not to just the board. The entirety of the community is benefiting from your expertise and your wizardry with numbers. So we thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything as adjourned?